Ricky, are we good? Yeah. I want to thank everybody for coming today to the Board of Aldermen meeting in North Topsail Beach. Today is Wednesday, January 8th. I am thrilled to see we have so many people here. I would want to just make sure if you would like to speak in any of the open forums that you have signed in so that we're able to call you up. And so with that, I'm going to officially call the meeting to order. I'd like people to have their phones on silent, please. And we're going to move forward next with what with this is an additional agenda item, but it's a moment of silence for Mr. Martin, who had just passed away. So if everybody could please bow their heads for a moment. Thank you. And with that, I was just going to ask Mayor Protem Leonard to just give a few thoughts about Mayor Martin, and then we'll move forward with the rest.
Thank you, Mayor. Don Martin was a neighbor of mine for going on 20 years. Don retired from the Army as a Sergeant Major. He attained the highest enlisted grade he could. He went to college, became a teacher, and completed a second career as a teacher. He and his wife Kathy lived up on Oyster Lane. We lost Kathy back in 2018 before Florence. Don served two terms, four years, as a town mayor here from 2007 to 2011. And he was just a really good guy. We lost him a week ago. We lost him this past Saturday. He was 88 years old. So fair winds and following seas, Mayor Don.
Thank you, sir. And we're going to move on to the invocation with Alderman Benson, please.
We're going to do a second moment of silence for the tragedy that occurred in New Orleans New Year's Day, New Year's Day, and also the National Day of Mourning tomorrow for former President Jimmy Carter. So let's please have a moment of silence before the invocation. Bless this town and may it remain a beautiful and friendly place to live. We pray that this board makes fair, informed decisions this morning. We also pray that our police officers, firefighters, and members of our armed forces here and around the world remain safe as they risk so much for our security. We also pray that our town be spared the ravages of hurricanes and other natural disasters and that everyone associated with the town remains safe and secure. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. The next item is the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any changes to the agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we are going to move right on to the manager's report with Mr. Arian.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year, everyone. Beach Projects and Operations, the Army Corps project that I reported on last month, there's a little bit of an update. They will be conducting dredging of the Atlantic Intercoastal Waterway and channels to Jacksonville and place beach-compatible material along the Phase One shoreline. They will be pumping approximately 88,000 cubic yards of sand around 2342 New River Inlet Road in Work South approximately 2,000 to 4,000 feet. It is anticipated that the nourishment may extend down to around Porpoise Place. That's an estimate. They expect that they might get there. They're not. We don't know until they start work on as far as reach they will get. So I just want to make that point. This is a Army Corps permitted, funded, and constructed project, and the town has limited input into the project construction, of course. We anticipated the project starting between December 5th and mid-December and work that would continue for around 30 days. There has been an update. I reached out to them on December 20th. They relayed that they expected work to begin February 1st. I've had further communication with them this morning, and they are now approximately two weeks ahead of schedule, which is, which I'm pleased to report, and they may start work earlier. The dredge is currently at Core Creek, north of Moorhead City, and will begin mobilizing today for New River Inlet, which will be their next stop. They will have more specific information over the next 24 to 48 hours. And I also have a call scheduled with them later on today towards the end of the day. So after that phone call, I expect to be able to potentially publish an update at that point in time. Division Coastal Management Beach Assessment. I reported at the last meeting as well that on November 20th, DCM and staff met on the beach to review properties near Porpoise Place up to and including the reef to look at the decks and compromised pools in that area. DCM declined to initiate the letters, so staff worked with DCM on the letters that went out to the affected property owners outlining some of the temporary solutions along with the notice of violation and orders to abate. Some owners have complied at this point and have received permits or are in the process of obtaining those permits. Staff continues to follow up as necessary on that matter. Phase Four Project, the contractor started work as scheduled on December 9th, starting at the south end of Phase Four, which is around 3686 Island Drive, and will work approximately 8,000 feet until May 1st, 2025, and place approximately 160,000 cubic yards of sand. Trucks are accessing the beach through the Second Avenue Access, which is Beach Access Number 28, with the address being 518 Topsail Road. They're still using that access at this point in time. This is our crossover and is the crossover that has been used in past projects. The project announcement was published along with a notice that they did pause operations for the holidays, and they resumed this week on January 6th. Potential Tropical Cyclone Number Eight, which was the unnamed storm that we experienced and had a lot of effects from. The funding agreement was uploaded and I had the exploratory call, excuse me, with FEMA and State on December 13th. The recovery scoping meeting is scheduled for this Friday, January 10th, where we will meet in person throughout the morning. The next step from what I see from there is then they will make the decision to obligate funds, and so I'll have more on that at the next meeting. Once funds are obligated, and I'm assured that they are obligated, then that's when we can issue the project announcement. Fire Station Number Two, owner, architect, contractor meetings continue on a bi-weekly basis, and work is still progressing. I've requested an updated schedule of progress and received it this week from the architects. I had a call with them and requested that it be reviewed to determine where they can make up some time. We did lose some time in the early part of the process with the elevator pit. We'll have a meeting on this more next week. They estimate completion right now in September. However, I do believe, and in talking with the architect, they believe that there is time that can be made up, and we'll be able to work through that and fully vet that at next week's meeting. And I'll have more information next month on their schedule. Plumbing roughens have been, are complete at this point at the ground level. Earth compacting has been in progress, and the concrete slab will be poured this month in January. There are multiple elevations because of the floodplains, so they are compacting at each of the elevations required. There are three different elevations for the lower level alone. Steel will be erected next. We expect that to take place in February, so you'll see the steel. Yeah. So you'll be able to see real progress happening at that point. It's been delivered. It's being, in the process of being delivered, has been being stored on site, so there won't be any delays. Holiday season, just one thing to touch base on, grinding of the greens. Residents are still able to recycle their real Christmas trees. If they bought one for the holidays, they can draw, still drop it off, undecorated at the Jeffries Lot, 316 New River Inlet Road, up until January 13th. Just please drop it off in the designated area, and then free mulch will be available for pickup after January 16th.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Arian? The only thing I would like to just make sure everybody in the audience and anybody who listens at home understands is the best place to get information on the beach projects is the Projects tab that Mr. Arian had just mentioned on our website. When it becomes an actual project that's moving forward, as you just mentioned with Tropical Cyclone Eight, they would be able to find information there about it. So that is also what, what, that's a dune project only, correct?
Yes, correct.
So I just want to make sure everybody understands that it was, as well, we're trying to repair the dunes that were, that were damaged. It's not beach. So, but again, if everybody could please keep an eye on the Projects tab, that's where you'll be able to see it moving along.
It's, it's replacing losses that were surveyed in the dunes, mainly between Phases One through Three, some in Four. Phase Five actually gained sand, so they're not really going to be part of that project. And like the mayor said, it is a dune project, and then we will be going in and doing plantings as well as part of that project as well to help stabilize.
Thank you.
How long will we continue collecting for recycling for old Christmas tree light strands?
We'll continue that through the end of the month.
You have to take your tree down, Connie. Okay, all right. We're going to move on to the first open forum.
Okay.
Do we have anybody signed up for the first open forum?
No.
So the first open forum would be an opportunity, if you don't understand it, for the board to hear anything that you might want to talk about or be able to present to us prior to the public presentations and hearings. So is everybody good waiting for the second open forum? Or does anybody want to switch it? We're good? Okay, then we're going to move on. And the first public presentation and hearing would be Onslow County Transit System with Executive Director Danny Ferrucci. Did I say that right? Thank you.
All right, good morning. Hey, thank you for having me here for the town of North Topsail Beach. My name is Danny Ferrucci. I'm the Executive Director of Onslow United Transit. We provide transportation services for all Onslow County. So our mission, you know, obviously to provide safe, reliable, and efficient transportation for all of Onslow County. We are a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3). We were commissioned by the county in 1979, and we have been, you know, going strong since then. Sorry. My apologies. So yes, we are located in Jacksonville, North Carolina, at Jacksonville Station. Again, we were incorporated in 1979, a nonprofit, and we are governed by a governing board of directors. Next. Next. So a little bit of description. So we operate subscription, demand response, and general transportation for all of Onslow County, and also ADA paratransit. So all of our vans are lift-equipped to handle ADA paratransit if need be. Who can ride? Anyone in the county can ride. You know, we have new passenger forms that you can actually go onto our website and register to be a new passenger. It's an application process that we go through and identify what program that you're eligible to ride on. Next. Unlike Jacksonville Transit, which is like a fixed route, city transportation, we actually do door-to-door. So what that means is we will go to your residence, pick you up, and take you to where you need to go. Okay? And again, it's all non-emergency transportation. Next. So here are some of the programs that we do have. So we have our ADA paratransit that we contract with the city of Jacksonville. We have a 5310 grant. And again, this grant right here is for the elderly and disabled. Traveler's aid grant. So with this grant here, it's, you know, becoming, becoming more and more popular throughout some of the partner agencies that we have. So in the case of you have a citizen who is in some type of domestic abuse situation, let's say they are recovering from addiction. If they're homeless, you know, we can get them a one-way Greyhound ticket to a support system. Anywhere in the country, it's a one-way ticket, and it's through grants that we apply for through the state. So that's a great resource that a lot of the partner agencies throughout Onslow County that we work with to get our citizens to the help that they need. And this is a grant that we have through Greyhound to be able to do that. We also, with the Rural Operating Assistance Program, this is a state grant that's passed through the county to Onslow United Transit. And with this grant, we have three programs within this grant. It's the elderly and disabled, which is EDTAP. We have a rural general public, so anyone outside the city of Jacksonville or the urbanized area can ride under this program. And also in employment work first. So anyone needing to go to work, we can also assist with getting them to their pointed place of where they need to go to work. Next slide. Here's our services here. And then we also just started up going out of county as well. So we kind of took out of county away for a while. Our out-of-county services are back on. Next slide. And there's a snapshot of, you know, the rides that we had in FY '24. So from July of 2023 through June of 2024, we totaled with 65,000 trips for that year. Yes, ma'am. This is an overall snapshot of Onslow County. And then next slide. And then here we have the greater North Topsail Beach area. So currently, we have five clients that we currently serve within North Topsail Beach and in the surrounding area. There's 142 clients that we actually provide transportation services to. So pending any questions?
So I do have one. How do you get the word, how are you getting the word out about this service that you provide now? Because I'd love to see that number be a little bit higher.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So we do a lot of outreach. So a lot of the county events that we go to, our website. We have our social media platforms that we push out. We partner with other agencies, with the county, with the city. So that's normally how we're getting the words out. Yes, ma'am. And then we have a newsletter that we push out to a lot of our partners. I believe, Alice, do you, do you get that newsletter? Okay, well, I can send those to you as well. We have a quarterly newsletter that we send out as well.
Okay, thank you, sir. Does anybody else on the board have any questions? Well, we appreciate everything that you're doing. Go ahead.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I did have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So for those closer to the beach and in this area, would you say those are more work-related or medical-related? Like, are people using this service for job transportation?
It's mainly job transportation followed by medical. Yes, ma'am.
But there is not a set route for, for that. It's individual pickups, correct?
So it's a shared ride system. So by 10:30 the prior day, we have to have all of our riders scheduled for the, for the next day. And then from there, we build a shared ride system. We build a route that picks up everyone within this general area at that time block to take them where they need to go. So it's not an individual pickup, but it's, there may be a few other passengers on the van, but it is a door-to-door service. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is the Onslow County Year-end Report with Assistant County Manager Carrie Sanders.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Alderman, and Town Manager. Thank you for having me today. As a representative of Onslow County Government, I am one of the Assistant County Managers. My purpose in coming to you today is really to communicate through you as representatives of an important constituent group, the citizens of North Topsail Beach. Our Board of Commissioners is committed to improving communication and collaboration between the county and our municipalities. So that is one of the reasons I am here today. I want to give you a brief update on the initiatives and the work of our Board of Commissioners and our county, and the work that we will continue for the next several years to enhance the lives of all Onslow County citizens. Next slide. First slide. Oh. Okay. Do you want me to? Go ahead. Okay. There we go. That's the right slide. So in January of 2024, our Board of Commissioners created a new vision and mission for the, for our organization. And over the last year, we have worked really hard to determine how to become the community of choice in coastal North Carolina. And this work began and continues through a very deliberate strategic planning process. Next slide. Our Board of Commissioners identified five strategic Our Board of Commissioners identified five strategic focus areas in January of 2024. And those areas are a county government that is fiscally responsible, high-performing. It is a community of choice, that we are focused and sustainable in our future, and that we have a health and, a healthy and safe community. And the work of our commissioners, as well as the county, is prioritized by these focus areas. Our Board of Commissioners, what I can tell you is they are very forward, future-focused. They are using data to make decisions, and they are actively engaged in the long-term planning for our citizens and our county. Next slide. So, we are in process right now of developing a strategic plan for Onslow County. And a critical part of that work started with community engagement. So, we did multiple things about six months ago to market the community survey. We did, we used social media, we used billboards. We even had videos on gas pumps to try and get citizens engaged in that community service, or community survey. We had over 1,200 citizens respond to the community survey, and we held upwards of 55 stakeholder review meetings, in person and virtually. So, we are currently in the strategic plan development phase. And once we complete this phase, we will take our strategic plan to our Board of Commissioners for adoption. And we are hopeful that will occur in February. And then, we'll move into the implementation action plan phase, which we know this is the critical part of the phase because we can have a strategic plan, but we have to have the action items so we can meet the goals of that strategic plan. Next slide. Probably of most interest to you and our community is the results of the community survey, the citizen feedback we received, and the environmental scan that was completed. One of the questions we asked on the survey was what does Onslow County Government do well? Top response was emergency preparedness and response. Of course, over the years, having to respond to hurricanes and other disasters, we have become the expert in this area. Also identified was our active and passive parks and recreation services, as well as our veteran services and library and cultural services. And although those areas were identified as things the county government does well, what we heard from citizens was they want more of those services. Next slide. We also asked our citizens what we can do better. So, I know number one is going to be no surprise to you guys, is managing the pace of growth in our county. The county has repeatedly heard this from citizens. So, we have begun to address this issue. The county recently completed a comprehensive land use plan, which is called Horizon 2040. That plan was completed with our planning department and multiple partners. That plan can be found on the Onslow County Government website. Our Board of Commissioners also recently held a joint meeting with our planning board. And they are also collaborating with the Jacksonville-Onslow Economic Development Group in their strategic plan. So, those are just some of the things that we are starting to help us manage the pace of growth in our county. Also identified in areas that we need to make some improvements is services to youth, community health and well-being, and communication. What we heard over and over again was that the county has not done a good job of communicating our services and the services we offer and the value of those services to our citizens. So, we are working on a communications plan within the county so we can do a better job of that. So, citizens know what we offer. They know who to contact and who to reach out to.
So, Ms. Sanders, are we able to ask a question? Or do you want to wait till the end?
It's up to you.
So, my question is managing the pace of growth. I'm sure that you're working with Onlasse because our biggest concern here has certainly been water pressure and sewer. But, so, for those unincorporated areas like Sneed's Ferry, how is that, how is that, are they included in this? I know they can answer the survey, but if it's unincorporated, it's a little bit more challenging to try and get a group of people to join in and help out and participate.
Absolutely. I do know that our planning department met with the unincorporated areas as well and gave, asked for citizen feedback and held meetings. I do believe the Sneed's Ferry meeting was very well-attended. So, I think we got a lot of input.
If I can add one thing in there too. And so, it wasn't me that brought this up.
It's all right.
So, maybe you can get your buddy to come in and talk to us since your other, the other.
Ben?
Yeah.
Warren?
Have Ben come up.
Sure.
Because Ben's the one that's more looking at stuff. And it's like, when you go to the meetings, this is a huge issue for them. And I know for Taylor, you know, for Mr. Metcalf, the Planning Director, it is too. So, maybe at some point, it would be great to have him come back and he can go into more detail. But it wasn't me that brought it up.
I appreciate that.
That's not Harrier.
Thank you.
Yes, and I can ask Mr. Metcalf or Mr. Warren to attend one of your meetings to get more into the details of that Horizon 2040 plan. You're welcome. Next slide. We also asked our citizens within the community survey to prioritize areas on our strategic plan. Again, the number-one response was managing the pace and growth of development. And that's a priority for our citizens, as well as our municipalities. They also identified developing the workforce and the mental health needs of our citizens. So, these priorities all really align with the strategic focus areas that our Board of Commissioners identified back in January of 2024. So, we have really good alignment with our plan. Next slide, please. As we review our accomplishments in 2024 and knowing these are areas that we continue to actively work on for improvements, I've talked to you about our strategic plan and where we're at in that process. We have also entered into Phase Five of our landfill expansion, which will really prepare us for the future. We have also engaged with the Jacksonville-Onslow Economic Development Group to, in their strategic plan. And as you may be aware, we are expanding our emergency operations center. We also designed a VIEW program within Onslow County Government. What we know is that we must take care of our employees so they can best serve our citizens. So, the VIEW program stands for valuing and investing in our exceptional workforce. And this program included several different initiatives. Just to name a few, we did a PACE study. We added retirement benefits, and also benefits for mental health for our employees and their families. And we also did a redesign of our performance evaluation program, just to name a few. Next slide. In keeping with our VIEW program, another initiative that the county has taken on is we identified our core values as an organization. And these core values is, are the foundation of our work. It is the framework for how we hold ourselves and each other accountable for the services that we provide our citizens. And we call it the REACH program. And this is just one initiative that we are doing in our ongoing culture shift that we are engaged in. Next slide. In conclusion, I have to say, this is an exciting time in Onslow County. I've hit my 30 years of service. I thought about retirement, and I don't want to retire now because it is such an exciting time in Onslow County. I feel like we are making changes. We are being very strategic in our work and really looking at long-term, sustainable efforts to make a difference in our county and with our citizens. So, we want to develop this plan and do the work to meet the needs of our citizens for years to come. We have the youngest population, and we also have the highest number of veterans in the state. And we have to take those things into consideration when we look at services and how to best meet the needs of our citizens. So, we also know that we must improve communication. So, I very much appreciate you allowing me to be here today. We have to increase our communication, use multiple different sources. We have to increase our communication with our partners, our municipalities, and our citizens so we can better serve them and we can become the community of choice in coastal North Carolina. So, part of, one of the initiatives the county did is some rebranding. So, this is our new branding for Onslow County. I did share with you guys some swag bags earlier. So, you can have that. It's just one of our visual representations of the changes that we're making in Onslow County. So, I very much appreciate your time. I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Does the board have any questions?
I just got one, just a couple. Thanks for coming.
Sure.
When Ben comes and the growth stuff too, one of the things that I learned in going to your meetings is how much of your budget is tied up in fixed. And I think that would be important to understand the resources they've got because it's 85% of the budget is fixed by law. Biggest expense is schools.
Schools.
Right, and hospital. And so, they don't have that. And I think that we do appreciate the fire tax and that money coming. But I think if Ben comes back, I think it'd be very helpful to us to get an idea of where the money's being spent.
Sure, we can give an overview of where our resources go throughout our budget.
That'd be great, thanks, ma'am.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is a legislation, legislative hearing regarding amendments to the flood damage prevention ordinance and conforming changes for the same to address development within the AEC setbacks. And it is Planning Director Hill. So, I need a motion to open the hearing.
Motion to open the hearing.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Deb? Yeah? On the, the last Board of Alderman meeting on December the 4th, the Board of Alderman directed the Planning Board to propose changes to the town's ordinances that govern development within the CAMA setbacks to address environmental concerns, beach erosion, and public health and safety. At the Planning Board regular meeting December the 12th, Attorney Charles Chip Payson presented two draft documents for the Planning Board's consideration. One was a resolution of plan consistency, and the second was several proposed amendments to the UDO and our unified development ordinance and the town's comprehensive plan, or also known as the Camelane Use Plan. There we go. Can you go down to like, I'm sorry, next? Yeah, that's it. So, to, I included some photographs in this presentation for the public hearing today. I think it gives a visual graphic of what the town is trying, the problems that the town is trying to address and how they're trying to address them. So, back during, after, immediately after Florence, when we'd taken a inspection of the beach and the structures, the photograph on the left indicates a pool. Now, that pool did not come up out of the ground. However, it is displaced. And where you see the erosion that's around the side and where it appears to be up, it's act, that's actually technically called scour, which is the removal by hydrodynamic forces of granular bed material in the vicinity of coastal structures, to include pools. Scour is a specific form of the more general term erosion. And the photograph on the right is the debris that accumulated at the tidal pond off of River Road. Next. So, both of these photographs indicate an example of the amount of debris that had washed up as well. Both washed up and also remained on the site as a result of damage from the storm surge also. Next. And those are just two more photographs indicating the, some debris. That, those few photographs, certainly, if you were here immediately after Florence, those photographs do not come close to documenting the complete amount of debris as a result of Hurricane Florence. Next. So, finally, in November 16th, 2021, we get started on recovery. And one of the challenges that towns and cities, local governments, or in states, federal government, are facing is how do we become more resilient to where that recovery can be more prompt? Next. So, this photograph, the pool on the left-hand side, that photograph was taken, and that's due to some escarpment on the, on the dune, where the dune has eroded away. That photograph was taken on May 25th of 2023. And about a year and a half later, this past fall, early winter, the pool, because of the continued erosion, because of the continued erosion, the pool displaced and was carried down below, I think that's Shipwatch? Topsail Dune, sorry. Next. So, the photograph on the left is a site where they started grading and excavating. And they had, they were, received a camera permit and a zoning permit, and building permit, of course. And they were authorized to install a pool in March of 2022. And the pool was completed in, on May 12th of 2022. November 14th of 2024, two and a half years later, this is the condition of that pool that was installed back in 2020, back in May of 2022. Next. So, after Attorney Payson's presentation, the Planning Board discussed the resolution and proposed amendments to the UDO and to the Camelane Use Plan. The Planning Board had a discussion regarding the ability of property owners to repair or replace existing or damaged pools and decks located within the CAMA setbacks. So, in response to that, if you already have a pool that was duly permitted, that falls under non-conforming uses, which is in Article 9 of the UDO. And 9.0101 is existing non-conforming uses. And I'm gonna read this real slowly because there's two parts. And I think it's important for people that do have oceanfront properties and do already have pools, that they're aware of this. And this did not, this section that I'm getting ready to read is existing. So, it does not require an amendment for this existing text to be in place. So, "The lawful use of land and/or building existing at the time of adoption of various regulations from which this ordinance derives, although such use does not conform to the provisions of this ordinance, shall not be affected by this ordinance. However, provided, however, that no such non-conforming use shall be enlarged or increased, nor shall any non-conforming use be extended to occupy a greater area of land than that occupied by such use at the time of the passage of the various regulations from which this ordinance derives." So, in plain language, what that says is that if you have something, i.e. a pool, shed, gazebo, whatever it is, and the, the... gazebo, whatever it is, and the, the Board of Alderman adopt a text amendment changing the UDO toward that what was, what was permissible yesterday, tomorrow is, I can't sign off on it, it's prohibited, right? But if you already have it, it's, the technical term is legal nonconforming, right? So, I'm, the town's not gonna go out there and for everybody that already has a pool, say, okay, you have to pull your pool up out of the ground, right? It's, it's considered legal nonconforming because you, as the owner, responsible property owner, had, you know, made sure that your contractor pulled the permits, the town did the inspections, and determined, determined that construction to be compliant with the codes at that time. So, the only caveat is that you cannot make it bigger, right? You can't expand it, you can't make it bigger. So, but, if something happens, if such a nonconforming use is discontinued for a continuous period of more than 365 days, any future use of the land in our building site shall be in conformity with the provisions of this ordinance. So, if something happened to your pool, and you didn't do anything for past a year, then you're out of luck, right? So, when you have damage, you need to be mindful and prompt about making those repairs in the status of what items that you're repairing or replacing. So, 9.01 nonconforming uses is a little bit more specific, it goes into a little bit more detail, and this is, like I just said, restoring nonconforming uses. So, "In cases not covered by 9.0101, no provision in this ordinance shall prevent the restoration of a nonconforming use in which the building has been damaged or destroyed by fire, explosion, or other casualty, or act of God, i.e. hurricane, storm surge, king tides, and three full moons", right? "If the restoration of such building is commenced within one year of the date of such damage and completed within the period of validity of the building permit issued thereof", right? So, once, once you come in and get your building permit, your zoning permit, typically, building permits are good for six months, zoning permits are good for one year. So, if you go past that six months, you might have to extend your building permit, but you're still good under that zoning permit, right? One of the questions that came up was, after Florence, if you were here and you had extensive repairs that had to be made, you, you may have, unless you were best buddies, or the mother-in-law, or father-in-law, or secret lover of one of the contractors, it may have been difficult for you to have gotten a contractor as expeditiously as you needed or wanted, because everybody needed a contractor, everybody needed help, right? So, where the ordinance gives up to 12 months, my thought is that if it went, if it was something that was catastrophic and everybody was, that everybody was hit, that the town was hit, because you may also recall that Town Hall was closed and staff was displaced for over two years, right? So, so, that is the reality. So, in the event that there were extenuating circumstances, I would foresee the board extending that 365 days for permits to, as a matter of equity and fairness, to, whether it was by ordinance or direction, or however the town attorney advised them, that they could legally do it in, in a, in an emergency, because, you know, when they declare an emergency, things are a little bit more liberal to try to help people get back in their house, right? And to make, and to make repairs. So, I would imagine at that point that the board, after consulting with the town attorney and the town manager, may have the town manager direct staff to, okay, we're gonna extend this out another six months, so if, if people are having a hard time, just keep track of it and document that they're having a hard time, right? All right, so for the Planning Board action, back to their last meeting, the Planning Board requested revisions of the proposed text amendments, and Attorney Payson revised the proposed amendments document. Ms. Brown made a motion to adopt the resolution that the proposed amendment to the town's UDO, as amended by the attorney this evening, is in accordance with all officially adopted plans, including the comprehensive plan. Ms. Ward seconded the motion. The motion passed unanimously, three to zero. So, the, it's recommended that the board conduct a legislative public hearing to solicit comments from the public, consider types of development that should be permitted or prohibited seaward of the oceanfront setback requirements, accept the Planning Board's resolution stating that the proposed amendment to the town's UDO is in accordance with all officially adopted plans, including the comprehensive plan, also known as the Camelane Use Plan, approve the proposed ordinance to amend Article 7, flood damage prevention, Article 11, definitions, Article 4, use regulations of the UDO and the Camelane Use Plan as presented or amended. In the attachments, there's a copy of the public notice. Next, this, I will have you go like back and forth on this one. So, in the public notice, anytime that there's a proposed text amendment or rezoning, which would, a rezoning is an amendment to the zoning map, so a text amendment is an amendment to the Unified Development Code. There's a statutory requirement to advertise twice, no further out than 25 days and no sooner than 10 days prior to the public hearing. So, the notice was placed in the Jacksonville Daily News on Saturday, December 21st, and again on Saturday, December 28th. It was distributed via the town sunshine list. If you are not on that list, and you're interested in the administrative town business and what's coming up for public hearings and in general information, I highly recommend that when you leave here today, that you sign up for it. Posted on the town's, it was also posted on the town's message board, and if you don't know where that is, it's right outside, when you go out the door, turn right, and it's that big, nice little wooden structure with a, with a plexiglass front. You'll see several, several notices in there. It was also posted on the town's website, on, on the meeting's website. All right. Okay. So, one of, if we can go to, I'll tell you what page it is. It was two pa, it's two pages after that one that you had, or pass that. I can't make mine go. It's right after the, it's the next page after the public notice. So, there's, there's the one that's on, the public notice that's on letterhead, and then it's the next one after that. Keep going, pass the staff report. Yeah, there you go, next, next one. Perfect. Okay, so... So, the proposed amendment addresses sheds, gazebos, and swimming pools within that CAMA setback. We're not talking about, let's see, what would be something? Trying to think of something that you wouldn't be able to put back there anyway. Like a hot tub, or... Whatever. So, the CAMA 15A NCAC 078.309, and for those of you that may not know, that NCAC is the North Carolina Administrative Code. There's a North Carolina General Statute, and then North Carolina Administrative Code, and that's basically where we get our state laws from. And 309 is the use standards for, sorry, use standards for ocean hazard area exceptions. So, "The following types of development shall be permitted seaward of the oceanfront setback requirements of Rule 306A of this section if all provisions of the subchapter and other state and local regulations are met", right? So, these are, these 10 items are the only 10 per the state that they allow. The local government may have higher standards, so, but they can't go in there and add like 11, 12, 13. They cannot add to this list, right? They can take away from the list, and that would be a higher standard, but they can't go in there and add more items that would be allowed within CAMA setback. CAMA's saying, nope, we just got these 10, that's it. So, and then those are sheds, gazebos, and swimming pools. So, when we start out, when the direction comes from the board to look at, you know, what we're allowing, we would be wasting our time if we were looking at Empire State Buildings, or stores, et cetera. We're, we're fine tuning it to what is, what's existing, what does the state allow there, and look at that. Okay. So, the next two pages are the resolution by the Planning Board, second page, signed by Fred Fontana, his vice chair. And then, the next document after that one is the proposed ordinance. So, hopefully, all of you have had a chance to look through that. So, in the changes, there were, after you get to all the whereas, whereas, therefore, and skip down to the meat, there's, there were three text amendments. One in the flood ordinance, which is Article 7 of the UDO, which is Section 1, and then in the zoning, which is Section 2, and then the third one was in the comprehensive plan or the Camelane Use Plan, which was contained in Section 3 of the proposal, the proposed ordinance. So, in Section 1, it reads, let's see if you get the same. So, in that first, it says, "All new, and it has construction and substantial improvements indicated as proposed deleted and replaced with development and accessory shall, and then, A, be located landward of the ocean hazard setback for development as determined by the Division of Coastal Management", and then, in paragraph B, "Comply with all applicable ocean hazard setbacks for development for unenclosed uninhabitable gazebos with footprint of 200 square feet or less, uninhabitable single-story storage sheds with foundational floor consisting of wood, clay, pack, sand, or gravel, and a footprint of 200 square feet or less, and swimming pools, which are hereby prohibited within the ocean hazard setback." So, in that section, it is specifying, out of those 10 that I showed you earlier, that Division of Coastal Management allows, the proposal is to take out the sheds, gazebos, and swimming pools. And that's out of, but that's addressing it out of the Article 7 and the flood ordinance. So, then you go to Section 2, or, yeah, Section 2, that within Article 4 of the UDO, use regulations, 4.0309, outdoor swimming pools, spas, and hot tubs be amended as follows. So, setbacks, "All swimming pools shall meet or meet the following requirements, in addition to the setbacks and other requirements specified elsewhere. One, swimming pools may be permitted landward of the ocean hazard setback for development as determined by the Division of Coastal Management, 15A NCAC 078306, and any amendments thereto." So, that's pretty cut and dry. Section, Section 3, sorry, getting a little finger happy here. There you go. In Section 3, in the Camelane Use Plan, which looks like this, if you ever see it online, that's what the cover looks like, in Section 5, "Goals and Implementing Strategies", Policy 14, be amended as follows, "That the town allows development within the defined areas, striking out inlet hazard areas, but areas of environmental concern, AEC, within the town's planning jurisdiction, assuming the development is consistent with lining out all local and subdivision regulations, but the Unified Development Ordinance", which is subdivision, zoning, flood. The comprehensive plan, which is the Camelane Use Plan, 15A NCAC 78, use standards, and the following use standards. So, none of that changes, the 1, 2, the amendment is... Scroll down to 6 on the next page. So, all those stay the same, we're not missing with anything else until you get to 6. And then, 6, "The following types of development shall be prohibited: unenclosed uninhabitable gazebos with a footprint of 200 square feet or less, uninhabitable single-story storage sheds with a foundation or floor consisting of wood, clay, pack, sand, or gravel, and footprint of 200 square feet or less, and lastly, swimming pools." And then, in, what, what's 6, I guess, change to 7, "In all cases, development shall only be permitted if it meets or it meets other applicable 15A NCAC 78 inlet hazard areas, use standards is landward of the ocean hazard setback for development as determined by Division of Coastal Management, 15A NCAC 78306, and any amendments thereto." And then, there's the standard language with Section 5, the effective date, and then, place for the mayor's signature and the town clerk's certification. So, if you can... So, when we advertise for a public hearing, part, the purpose of advertising for that public hearing is to solicit public comment. So, when you go home and you sign up for the sunshine list, and the next public hearing that you see, and you want to comment on it, then feel for, whosoever name is on there, right? If it's mine, send it to me, if it's the town manager, send it to her. Solicited those comments because they become part of that staff report, right? So, the first letter that I had received was from Wendy Purser. I'll go over that in a second. You don't wanna go?
No.
Okay. All right.
Just your comment.
All right, just my comment. We're just about finished. So, the... So, the language that I just read to you in the proposal, that was what was presented to the Planning Board and what the Planning Board reviewed, based their resolution to the Board of Aldermen. So, between the Planning Board that was in December and today, and this happens whenever you advertise for a public hearing, and there's other people like y'all that are reading this, and you either call me up or you send an email and say, "Deb, this doesn't make sense to me. This is not how I read it," right? So, we have to go back and look at it and say, "Okay, how can we make this clearer? How can we clarify this and make it a little more manageable?" So, that's the part that I'm getting ready to jump into this point, and it'll be up to the Board how they want to handle it, I'm just throwing a wrench in it like usual. So, in, so in that first section in the flood ordinance, instead of it being under the section that it was, my recommendation is for like swimming pool sheds and gazebos, those, what those three items have in common is that they're all accessories, right? You have your, your house, which is your principal structure, and then you have your accessories that are subordinate to your house, that's, that's your main one, and then you have your subordinate accessories. So, in the flood ordinance, there is a section already on accessories. So, for clarification in D, this is about the last, if you go to the very end of that PowerPoint that I brought you up, that I brought for you, sent to you, sorry, I got hydrated. What page are you on?
This would be the very last, Eric.
Yeah.
No, this isn't on for the hearing, so I think you wrap up after your...
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, then that concludes my report.
So, I'm gonna, I believe what I can do at this point is ask the Board if they have any comments, but, do we do the public first?
Well, we've got one more presentation, Chris, do you want to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Just identify yourself.
Can I just ask a clarifying question while Chris is walking briskly to the podium? So, as I understand the process, we'll go through a hearing, we'll get public comments, right? Then we'll shut down the hearing, and then we'll discuss it and get the initial stuff, right?
Correct, yes.
So, when you're asking for our comments, that should be after the hearing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand, I thought that was the process, and I was getting confused, thank you.
My name is Chris Gibson, I'm the Consulting Coastal Engineer for the town of North Topsel Beach. I'm the President of TI Coastal, in TI Coastal Services, a coastal engineering firm here in Wilmington. I have been here my whole life, I'm one of the few natives here from Pender County. I was asked to make a few comments about the dangers, shall we say, of having these ancillary structures in the, in the 60 to 90-foot setback here at North Topsel Beach. That setback varies, it's 30 years times, 30 times the erosion rate is what that setback is from the first line of stable vegetation, be that a nice flowing dune and vegetation at the bottom, or be that vegetation at the edge of a seven-foot scarp. There, you have two different values from a coastal engineering perspective, but it's taken from that vegetation line, and that's the state standard. That 60-foot, we use 60-foot because most of the state is, I'll say 60-foot because most of the state is two feet. That 60-foot setback is a buffer. The ocean waxes and wanes, the shoreline does, and it, it moves not at a gradual inch-by-inch pace so that it is two feet per year. It comes in big chunks when we have storms, king tides, you may see erosion 30, 40 feet in one night. And then you may have some recovery, and you get back some of that sand, and over the next summer, you get some of the vegetation back, and that line moves back out a little bit, and then another storm comes, and so, we're kind, we're very event-driven here on Topsel Island with how that goes. Things happen suddenly. When you have major structure, that 60-foot setback is there as that buffer. It's a buffer to protect the house. No one will tell you exactly why they picked 30 years, but the fact that a mortgage is 30 years makes a lot of sense, that that's the life of a house from initial build. That means if you build all the way, the house all the way to the 60-foot line, you're non-conforming day one. By the time that house is built, you're within 60 feet of the vegetative setback typically. I've been working with the town for several years now, working on a plan to get all, the entire town length nourished, to restore the dunes as much as possible through that process, and one of the things that we have is when we put these structures in that 60-foot setback, you remove any buffer that we have. When we have a storm, it's going to go into that 60-foot setback. No matter what we do, the dune is going to erode during a storm. How much it erodes depends on how much beach we have in front of it, but it's going to erode. And if you build all the way out to that line, whatever it is, if it's a shed that you put out there, expect that shed to be in someone else's yard after a storm. If you put a gazebo out there, expect some of them to be turned upside down in the middle of the beach, as they were in Surf City after Florence. If you put a pool, that's a whole nother ballgame, because pools are like boats, they float, all right? Unless, unless it is a vinyl-lined situation, but if you're putting in a fiberglass pool, it floats, it's got fresh water in it, a pool full of fresh water will float in saltwater, which means when the tide comes in and the water table rises, your pool will float. It will float up slightly, it may float up dramatically, and then when you get scour around it and the sand that's holding it in place gets scoured out, and it's floating, it winds up down the beach somewhere. This is not, this is not a new thing for, for North Topsel Beach. Oak Island has had a situation with this, they have, I believe they've gone and they've, they've banned swimming pools on the backside. Topsel Beach does not allow swimming pools in the yards of oceanfront homes, period. So, this is, this is not a new thing. But it is, if you get, if you're work putting things in that buffer zone, expect them to be destroyed at some point in time. Expect them, the larger they are, expect them to be a bigger projectile, a bigger liability on you towards someone else's property. So, and it makes it harder for folks like me, who are trying to help the town spend tens of, tens of millions of dollars protecting the whole town, when folks are trying to push as far forward as they can, it makes my job much more difficult because I kind of have a no-man-left-behind policy in what I try to do. But, you can't protect the guy that's running out in the middle of the, middle of the highway. It's, if you're, if you're putting it out there, it's dangerous, and it's dangerous to others, because when a pool comes out of the ground and comes out through the dune, it creates a breach point. Not only does it create a breach point in the situation of, okay, the dune is down, but now there's a hole too. So, you've even got a hole, you've got deeper water coming in, it becomes a problem not only for you, but your neighbors, and these, you know, the houses on our island are not, they're not spaced, they're not five-acre lots. So, you're, you're 50-foot wide, 75-foot wide, 100-foot wide lots, a breach in one lot is a breach in five. So, something to consider, I mean, I just don't think that it's a good idea to be allowing these structures, whether it's gazebo, whether it's large-scale gazebos, 200-square foot, that kind of thing, whether it is anything other than a crosswalk, I just don't think that that's really good policy to have that. And again, your neighbor to the south, Topsel Beach, has even eliminated, because they've got a second row of dunes now, they've even eliminated the crosswalks over the frontal dune. So, you have to go down, and then you have a path that goes through, through the dune. So, they've gone as far as to eliminate that, and with the work they've done, it's, it should be noted, with the work they've done since 2011, they've not lost a single set of stairs or had any structures that have come up in the last 13 years. So, that tells you a lot about what their policies are doing to aid them in avoiding having to do reconstruction. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, so, yep, so do we have anybody who signed up for comments?
We do. Jerry.
Joan Garrius.
I didn't want to butcher your name, 134 Ocean View Lane.
Hello, I'm here as a homeowner, I own an Ocean Sound Village, and I'm here to read a letter from our President of our Association. Regarding the proposed town restrictions on oceanfront pools, it is our understanding that during your meeting on Wednesday, there is an agenda item significantly restricting swimming pools on oceanfront property. In this regard, it seems apparent that certain aldermen are not in favor of an open debate and discussion on this proposal. There was a last-minute addition to the Planning Board's agenda to discuss this proposal when all members were not in attendance and with no notice to the public. Shortly thereafter, during the holiday season, the agenda of the aldermen had this major item buried under a nondescriptive agenda item with no indication of the scope and intent, without appropriate input from owners, real estate brokers, builders, and other interested parties. Clearly, this lack of adequate notice and transparency provides an additional basis for legal challenges. If the town's legal counsel is advising that the town will easily prevail on sustaining this proposed ordinance without adequate hearings, it will result in major interference with ownership rights. As others have or will point out, this proposed owner, ordinance will have adverse effects on property values. While we agree that our beaches and dunes need to be augmented and protected, our HOA strongly disagrees with the approach contained in the proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much for coming today. Do we have anybody else, Mr. Ian?
Carol Irvine, 134 Ocean View Lane.
Do I have to punch a button?
No.
Okay, cool. Good morning. One of the problems I see with this is you've got a state of North Carolina law that's a new law, very new, it's about downzoning, and the town of North Topsel is, with this ordinance, I think it's going to require, it's going to be going against a state law and open you guys up for a lawsuit. This new law requires local municipalities to get written authorization from each landowner impacted. It's not just zoning density per se, but also applies to reduction of permitted uses of land. I, I copied this from the National Law Review. The new law now requires that even local government must obtain written consent of any and all owners of downzoned property. Simply, downzoning as defined by the new law cannot be initiated at the will of governing agency that created the law. Instead, turning precedent on its head, all property owners have acquired vested rights therein, which cannot be modified at the will of local governments. I think, you know, you're going to be opening yourself up for a ton of lawsuits on this. The other thing is, I think you're devaluing the property of oceanfront big time. We spent two and a half years when we decided to leave Seaside, Florida to come up here. Two and a half years, we looked up and down the coast, and I had three non-negotiables, one of which was to have an oceanfront pool. Fell in love with North Topsel, we bought here, built here, over the years, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in taxes, millions of dollars in building, brought revenue. I have 14 of my regular rentals, renters that have bought houses here in Topsel or built and bought houses, or lots, or whatever, and they never knew about Topsel until we brought them into the area. I'm not a Realtor or anything, I just love the place, but I would never have been here if we hadn't been able to build an oceanfront pool. I am the most pro-dune person you're ever going to meet. I mean, I go out and I work my dunes, I go out and I get little scrub live oaks to put in it, scrub cedar trees from local things, we put up sand fence, I irrigate, I let my neighbors use my irrigation if they don't have water themselves. I think dunes are really important, but you have a simple solution, if you don't want vinyl pools, Chris, you do like I did and put a cement pool in, then you don't have to worry about anything floating away on an oceanfront pool. When I came down here after Florence, I had zero dune breach, and if you take care of your dunes, you don't have to worry about the dune breach. And if you, if you have different regulations, and I understand now that we have different regulations on oceanfront pools than the pictures from two years ago, if we implement those, the people that have lots deep enough and that actually do make their dunes compatible will be able to have the dunes. Thank you guys for your time, I really think you either need to table this, or, or kill it if you can, but table it until we have some legal interpretation.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody else?
No.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I put my name on a list, maybe I put her on the wrong page.
You can, you can come up and just state your name and which address you're at, and...
Anthony Richardi, 748 New River Inlet Road. So, my question was if the, when you, you're actually voting on this today, is that my impression? So, if this thing were to pass, when would it take effect? Is that immediately?
Yes.
And what about people who already have permits out to install a pool?
Yeah, Deb, our Planning Director addressed that, so those would not be affected.
All right. The other thing is, with the homeowners that recently bought properties, with the exception of putting in a house, and that, that was on my end, I'm just looking forward for people who just purchased properties, are they going to be able to, I mean, get any sort of notice or timeline that they're able to put a, get a permit for a pool, or is it someone who just spent $700,000 on a lot with the impression they're going to be able to put a pool and now can't?
If the Board passes this ordinance, there will be no new pools in the ocean hazard setback area.
All right. I guess that's it, thank you.
Well, and I think one of the questions that you had asked me prior, I just want to get some clarification for everybody. Some folks have submitted permits that are not yet approved, would they be able to go through that process still, or would they be in the, you can't have a pool?
In the ocean side.
Yes, that's my question.
It's my understanding that if we were...
Come to the microphone.
Sorry.
I just want to make sure everybody understands.
Could, could we also just do one clarification, because this keeps coming up in the letters and stuff? We're not banning pools like Topsel did on the ocean side. All we're saying is that within that environmental area that Chris described, you can't put these structures, all right? Topsel Beach specifically bans anything between the home and the ocean or on the side, right? That's, that's not what we're doing, okay? So, if you've got a big enough lot that you can respect that, you can put a pool in.
Well, I'm in the zone, particularly on my lot, I'm in the camera zone, but we have the permit with the camera approval, as well as, we submitted for permit for it, I mean, so it was kicked back, we got to add a few more things to it, but our permit has been accepted, well, it has been filed in. So, I just wanted to make sure.
I was just making that clarification, because that seems to be out there.
Well, let's, let's...
That's correct.
Let's stay on track, I think that is exactly the question. The permit was submitted, it was kicked back, and I'm sure he, you're not the only one in that situation, because it's quite common that we have additional questions. Would those permits still be honored through the process or not, I believe is his question?
Yes, sir. Per the ordinance, an application is considered accepted when it's complete. So, if someone turns, and there's documentation, because we're in, you know, coastal development requires certain documentation such as elevation certificates, V-zone certifications, site plans, et cetera. So, if you just go online and you fill out an application and say, "I want to put a pool in my yard," and you draw a picture on a piece of notebook paper and you submit that, does that count? No, that's an incomplete application. And you're going to get an email from the... to get an email from the town through the portal that says, please include V-zone certification, elevation certificate, site plan, whatever else, engineered plans, depending on what it is that you're developing. So, people rushing in at eleven fifty-nine trying to get their permits in, unless you have a complete application package, if the ordinance is approved, I have no choice but to go by what the board approves and effective at the point in time that they change the ordinance. Okay? So, in 2021, just to give you some background, in 2021, there was, there were some
No, I think we're, I think we're okay.
Right, there's
Can I finish one of my questions?
There's two, go ahead.
Okay, so, my house is new, seven forty-eight. It's a, it's brand-new construction, which was, we just got our CO, I'm going to say approximately a month ago. So, once the CO came, it went to the phase of getting the pool installed now. And we've been shopping for contractors. We've been shopping for everything we need to do, financing for the pool to go in, and which everything is pretty much in place. But, so, now, this passes and should have had a lot, basically. I mean, I mean, that can't be, I wouldn't believe that the board would do that to people. I really can't. I mean, I mean, that would be horrible to do that after everything's been in place to put this pool in, and now all of a sudden, the last hour, you change the law here, which, you know, it's just, it's just not right.
Okay.
So, I, I would like to know, before I go any further and put even more money into what I'm doing, where I'm at with this.
Okay. Thank you, sir. I appreciate your time. Is there anybody else that needs to speak? Okay. Do, sir, do I close the hearing first and then, okay?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the board is allowed to comment at this time?
Correct.
So, I'd like to, maybe we just go around our most
Don't we start with a motion? I thought we start with a motion to whether we're going to approve, as submitted to us, second that, and then have the discussion before we vote on the motion?
That's fine, yeah.
Isn't that the better way to do it?
We can do it that way, that's fine.
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the language set forth and provided to us.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Now, we have discussion?
Now, we have discussion.
Okay. So, do we want to go, just go around for discussion, and we'll start with you, Alderman Grant?
Since I've spent the most
Mm-hmm.
And again, I respect, you know, the people that live here. But the idea that this has been some kind of secret, the idea that this has been some kind of secret is the people in the board will tell you. I've been, somebody said ranting about this for over two years. This is in the planning board minutes. This is in the towns' minutes, okay, about building, about what this is doing to the beach. And so, to say that we, this snuck up on us means that you weren't paying attention, because I have brought this up continuously, as my board members know, to the odarnasium, someone would say, because of what we're getting ready to do. And the reality in this is, Chris has talked about this town spending, he says tens of millions. It's actually hundreds of millions of dollars over the next twenty years in the beach. And it would be very hard for me to submit or to agree and vote in favor of spending hundreds of millions of dollars if basically we're not protecting the dunes that are the basis for spending that money. And if you look at what Toppsil did, they're much more restrictive in the things that we're doing here. And they banned these things because they knew we were going to spend that money. So, and again, I'm back to what, what he talked about again. You know, and my, my classic is, Mr. Grant, on August third, 2022, said, "Let's look into a buffer zone for building near the dunes." That's over two years ago. Our beach engineer has stated and warned that if you don't protect the landward side, as he just eloquently said, then basically you're undermining the money that's going into the beach. We've had that discussion in BISAC. We've had this discussion everywhere. And, and I think the, the interesting thing about this, the prime example we keep talking about is something that's called the ocean hazard setback or area of environmental concern. By definition, that should tell you that's probably not an area where you want to put a lot of stuff, since it's a hazard area. And again, we're not, as I read this, and my, my view on this is not to keep people from building pools as they've done in Toppsil, but to say, hey, let's give Mother Nature a break on this thing. Let's give them a few more feet. Because if you look at, and Chris can, could nod or not, when you're looking at the sixty-foot setback, you probably have thirty-foot of it that's a dune that you can't build on anyway, and we've got a five-foot buffer, we're talking about basically stepping back stuff twenty feet if that sixty-foot is there and saying, we've got to protect that area. And to me, you know, if I'm a homeowner, I mean, I've heard the argument, and again, about how this is hurting economic values. I think everybody in the north end, and I see Susan up there, will tell us, losing the beach and the dunes is going to affect the value of the property a lot more, okay, than having a pool. And I'm not against pools. That's great. But I've got areas in my almost two-acre lot that I can't build on, which is fine. Anyway, I just think that, and also, if you remember, three meetings ago, Mr. Riggs was talking about how much more damage putting pools in these structures do than building a house. And Kama doesn't let us build a house in these areas, and yet they let other things. And Ricky, can you pop up those pictures that I sent you? Here's the other reason, and I talked to the head of Kama a couple of years ago about what we can do and not do, and hopefully he can do this. So, I went out and took a picture of some of the Kama markings for the first line of vegetation, Chris, is that the right term? And these little puppies were three inches from a six-foot straight drop-off on a dune. And they're telling us that's stable vegetation right there. Now, that was six inches. I think yesterday it was four inches, because more of the dunes gone away. That doesn't protect this town. I'm sorry. That, and, you know, Mike and I talked about this for years, is that if they're allowing, if that's the first line of vegetation, and I can tell you that the dunes across, anybody that walks the beach has seen how much, and we're talking about a king tide doing a lot of that stuff. They're not protecting us. All right? And so, we've got to take the steps, especially when we're looking to put three hundred million dollars into this beach to protect those things. So, and again, I've got example after example of minutes from planning board, from this meeting and everything else. This, this issue has been going on for well over two years in terms of protecting these beaches. And so, I think it's, it's disingenuous to say this has been hidden. We've got all the legal notices properly sent out. I've talked about this odarnasium, probably again odarnasium today, you know, but this is a big thing. We're doing more beach work than we've ever done in the history of this town, and we're looking at doing hundreds of millions of dollars more. If we don't protect these dunes, okay, that's going to be a really bad thing for the town. So, end of my sermon.
Ms. Sasevsky, do you have anything?
No, I think we have to do what's fiscally responsible and what is for the greater good, and certainly protecting the setback areas per our own engineer, I think, is the responsible thing to do.
Mayor Protem Leonard?
Just very short, I concur with the remarks made by both Ms. Sasevsky and Alderman Grant. We've got to look at the big picture here. The big picture is restoring and preserving our shoreline. And if we're going to spend tons and tons and tons of money to buy tons and tons and tons of sand, we've got to make sure that we can do everything possible to ensure that it remains in place. And putting pools in, or any, any structures here that, to use, to use Mr. Gibson's word, create a breach point and remove the buffer established in the setback is just bad business. And I understand there's some folks out here who are not happy with the potential of this thing being passed, but I would ask you to please look at the bigger picture than what's just in front of your house. Thanks.
Alderman Benson?
Yeah, I guess I'm the fourth one here in the row to concur with my colleagues. I think one thing was important that Chris said in his comments just a few minutes ago was, yeah, there's that, that setback is based on maybe the thirty-year mortgage, but the erosion can occur overnight. It's not like it's two-year, it's two-foot this year, two-foot next year, yada, yada. No, it can happen all of a sudden, as we saw what occurred on the north end and the, in the Dolphin Shores area. Just with the king tide, it wasn't really basically a hurricane. It was a king tide and the wind blowing from the wrong direction. And, well, you know, we got pools out on the beach, floating down the beach. So, I think we've got to really think about protecting our, our dune system and keeping that ocean hazard setback area as what it was intended for, as a buffer zone from man-made structures.
Alderman Puddle?
And I agree with my fellow board members. As Rick was saying, this has been in the work for over two years, since April 2022, when the Port City Daily even had an article about it in their April sixteenth edition. The board at that time, and it was Rick, directed the planning board to start reviewing it. We have talked about this so much, especially Rick. But we have. And we're not actually trying to prohibit pools, just like he said, but we want to protect our ocean setback area. We want to protect our dune lines. We especially want to protect the environment as well as people's property. Once you start doing anything that can end up compromising the dunes, you're just not compromising the dune in your area. You're doing it for your whole neighborhood. We really want, the reason we wanted to look into this was we especially, and do something about it, just not look into it. We wanted to try to alleviate the risk of damage to the environment, to property. We want to protect the public health and safety, and we want to preserve our natural resources. And in order to do that, we have to do something for the, in the ocean setback area, which is our buffer zone. And this is only within the Kama setback area. We're not prohibiting pools. We're not trying to take away anybody's property rights. We just want this for the protection of the town.
So, we can call for a vote. I do just have one procedural question, sir. Maybe you can help me with this.
Can I, can I just, I just want to add something real quick. It appears there might need to be some clarifications as what you brought up about whether it's substantial or not. My suggestion is, is that we vote on what's in front of us.
Yes.
And then we refer back to the planning board to discuss those type of issues, to see if we can get those type of things resolved, because I think we want to be fair in the process. All right? But what I'm concerned about, if we don't pass this, then we're right back to, and if you remember, it took me over a year to get the five-foot setback. So, I would like to go forward and then do some clarification.
Just, just for full transparency, one of my questions that I would like to have clarified is, for example, there is a setback on the sound side, too. So, if you're on a canal or if you're directly on the ICW, you also have a setback there, too. So, we're specifically today talking about the ocean
Right.
hazard setback, but is that something we would like? So, though, that's, it doesn't impact what we're voting on today. Mine is more procedurally for those folks. I've talked to a few. They, just like this gentleman here, has recently built a house. From what I understand, some folks have their Kama permits already approved for the, for the structure, the dwelling, the house, as well as the pool, because they, you know, you have to submit everything that you want to do. So, if, if that has been approved and it's in the process with the town, and I'm not exactly sure what might be outstanding or sent back, are those things that are, that will be denied, or are they, I'm not sure that it's cut and dry. That's what I'm trying to understand. Yes, ma'am?
I can answer that question.
Sure. Well, I, I think, first of all, that these are things that the planning board should comment on. But what Deb had said earlier was that a, an application to the town is not complete, is not submitted until it's complete. So, that may be the threshold that the town has
But to, just, just to clarify, though, when an original application is submitted for the site, it's all there. But they're building the house only first, and then they're doing the pool second. So, I don't know that everything is as cut and dry, and I'd like it to be very
Again, I'm sure, I'm sorry. I think, first of all, a good thing for the planning board to comment on. But secondly, it, it seems from your question that the application in total is complete. It contains multiple pieces.
Right.
But those pieces
That's what I was asking.
in the application is complete, under Deb's rationale earlier, then that would be, they would be afforded the ability to move forward.
Okay. And like I said, going back to my comment, I'd like to go forward and get a vote on this. But it also seems to me that if you have a situation like that during this interim period before planning board comes back to us, can't they ask us for an exception? Can't you come back to the board and say, I've already got my Kama permit, I've already got this, I've got this. The only thing I'm missing is page thirty-five versus somebody that Deb said that at twelve fifty-nine sent it in, a picture and a napkin. Okay? And so, I think
But just, just keep in mind that a lot of applications have, it's my understanding, have come in and they're considered incomplete. Correct, Deb?
Correct.
So, so if they're, if this gets approved, those applications that are incomplete would not go through the process, and it would be denied.
How many are we talking about?
Probably one or two, I bet. That answers my question.
I would like to proceed, and if we have to handle one-offs, I think you made a very good point. If I've already got my Kama permit, I've done this, and the only thing I'm missing is, you know, I didn't staple two pages together, and you bring that to us, that's something I'm going to say, hey, that, to me, is not, that's not what we were trying to do.
That's, that's my, I just wanted to clarify that, because it is very much different than, as you mentioned, somebody drew it on a napkin and sent it in.
Right. And she's only, if she's got one or two, I think council can tell us, that's something we can handle pretty easily. Correct?
And the question, too, then, for the planning board, too, is where, where does the variance procedure come into play?
Back to the board. That was my response, that if I, if I go upstairs and start working, and there's an incomplete application, and I deny it, procedurally, they would make an application to the Board of Adjustment, not back to the Board of Aldermen.
That, that is, that is good clarification, Deb. Thank you.
So, there's recourse.
All right. So, now we have a motion to vote?
Okay, yes, so we have
Call the question.
I'm sorry, Tom, did you have a question?
Call the question, please.
Oh, the vote question. Yes, I was like, wait, you have a question? Okay, so we have a motion to approve from Rick, and we have a second from Connie. So, Ms. Aaron, would you mind just going around for the final vote?
Alderman Grant?
Aye.
Alderman Sasevsky?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Leonard?
Aye.
Alderman Benson?
Aye.
Alderman Puddle?
Aye.
Mayor McDermott?
Not voting.
Teasing me on that one. Okay, so, the, the vote passes. I want to thank everybody for their time today, and I want to thank the board for putting so much effort into educating yourselves so we could have a good discussion. So, we're
Does this mean I can stop talking?
I'm sorry, I didn't
I can't figure it out. Did it get referred back to the plane?
No.
No, it passed. It passed. It passed. So, the next item on our report would be our coastal engineer, Mr. Framway. Okay. How are you, Fran? Thanks for joining us.
Good. Good. How are you, Mayor?
I'm good. I think we can get started.
Happy New Year.
Okay.
Okay, just, just a quick update for January 2025. Alice did a great job at kind of summarizing all the coastal projects. You know, I've been coordinating with Alice, you know, almost daily on a lot of these projects. We'll just jump into it. Just an overview of the North Toppsil Beach shoreline from New River Inlet down to the Surf City Town limit. We have the five phases of beach. These were, you know, delineated, you know, about twenty years ago. We just kind of kept with it. And as you can see, there's work that has been recently done or work that is planned in the near future for the entire section of shoreline. And then we will go over all these And then we will go over all these items individually, but we have, you know, up here in the Phase One area. The Phase One area, as Alice mentioned, we have that 88,000, the core project that's planned this winter. Then the Phases One, Two, Three, that, this is that project that Chris is heading up with the disposal area 143, the state grant that is ongoing right now. And then we have the Phase Five project that was recently completed. Down here, we're also, as Alice mentioned, the FEMA tropical, potential tropical cyclone, PTC eight mitigation, and I will, we will have a meeting this Friday, and I will be attending that meeting with Alice. Here is this, this is, let me see here. This is not showing up here. This is the, the core project that is dredging from the intercoastal water, where they started approximately here, two, two, three, three, four, New River Inlet Road, and they're working south. As Alice mentioned, she just, I, I contacted South Winds a few weeks ago, and they told me this, and obviously, when I submit this, it is about 10 days in advance. And Alice has an update, which is good, which is that they're ahead of schedule. Let me see here, there's the next one. This is just a.
Fran, just real quick, this is Rick, I'm sorry, I should have asked you this in the earlier slide. On the cyclone stuff, do we have a number that we're, that we submitted, money and cubic yard wise?
Not officially, no.
Ballpark?
This Friday meeting.
Right, ballpark?
Yeah. It would be, you know, Alice, did you, it was, hopefully, we're thinking around, you know, 80,000 cubic yards, but it could be anywhere between 65 and 80,000 cubic yards.
They were provided an estimate in cubic yards.
But that's millions of dollars of sand.
Uh, yeah, like, between maybe three and four million.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
And we are, you know, working, moving forward this project. We're not going to just wait for FEMA, and obviously, the FEMA project, we're working with the state, the North Carolina Emergency Management, NCEM, who pretty much, you know, works with the FEMA staff, and, and so, you know, with the meeting this Friday, we'll be with all those folks. Then this is the recently completed Phase Five nourishment. It's, you know, it's holding up really well, it held up well to PTC eight, it actually gained material. So that, that is doing well. Here's the state grant in Phase Four, and it's beach with some dune renourishment. It has begun down here on the south end of the project, and will work north. And the, and then the next slide shows basically where they are now. They are stockpiling in this area near Murrell Drive, and then they will push out here. It's, it's going well. The sand is really good, as always, pretty much with this upland mine sand, it's slightly, it's very beach compatible. It's on the coarser side of the beach compatible, which is good, and the color is good, it, it matches really well with the native sand. And it is, you just, always beach compatible, but on the slightly coarse side, which is, it's just good, and it usually performs a little bit better than the slightly finer beach compatible sand. And over there, you know, over, you know, 12,000 cubic yards placed already, and, you know, we're, I, this is when January and February, we're going to see some, some good production. They've got a huge stockpile, over 100,000 cubic yards at the, the mine, so there won't be any eruptions, interruptions, and, you know, this, this has been going well. Here's the disposal area 143, up near the Cedar Bush Cut and New River Inlet Crossing and AIWW. Chris is, Chris and his team are working on, you know, getting this permitting together. And it is, you know, anywhere between 1, 2.6 and conservatively, you know, 1.9 million up to 2.6 million cubic yards of material, and it's all very good material that, it's, you know, and it is also, the shallow draft inlet dredging funding is available for this, so that is, you know, a major cost savings for the town, as, as the shallow, the state shallow draft inlet dredging can, will fund, you know, the, most of this project. PTC eight, as I mentioned before, this, this did happen in September 16 to 20, 2024. The Phase Five shoreline did actually gain sand during this, but the Phases One through Four lost, you know, significant material, and the dunes were, you know, compromised. And that is kind of what we're looking for. We're kind of focusing on, on, because Phase Four is getting nursed right now, we are focusing on the dune losses and restoring the dune in Phases One through Three, and trying to get something, getting that moving forward as soon as, as soon as possible. Here's just more on the PTC eight. You can see here, basically, the Phase Five, we, we're submitting for Phase One through Phase Four, as Phase Five is, doesn't qualify, and you can, and obviously, the, the dune losses are, are substantial in Phases One through Three, and that's what we will be doing on Friday, we'll be discussing this, and then just our path forward, and making sure we stay on schedule. Just a quick summary update, the, the core project, as we mentioned, will begin here. I have this as beginning in early February, it could even start earlier, hopefully, just a couple of weeks. The New River Inlet Management Plan, there's a meeting tomorrow on this. It does seem like it hasn't moved forward here. Mayor Proton Leonard, I, I did reach out to Dow 40 several times, and I really haven't gotten a, a good answer on the updated timeline for, you know, where the project is now. I contacted both Steve Dial and Ralph yesterday, and I have not heard back again. So I, I'm, you know, there to help, and I'm not sure what's going on right now. But hopefully, we can get that moving forward as, as, you know, we really want to get that draft EIS out ASAP.
Yes.
And that, and that meeting is on hold right now, Fran, because the, the corps is post, asked to postpone it because of their offices were closed down for a large part of the week for funeral services. So we're, I'm in the middle of trying to schedule another meeting with potentially next week, but it has not, I haven't been able to solidify everyone's schedule yet.
Okay.
So stay tuned on that front.
All right, all right. And then I will, I will continue, I will reach out again to Dow 40 to see, you know, get an update and try to get an updated timeline here in the meantime. The state grant nourishment in Phase Four, that's, I, 250, it's about 250,000 cubic yards planned. They are putting, the majority of that material out this season. Then PTC eight, I have here about 61,000 to 88,000 potentially available, or eligible, excuse me, and our focus will be on Phases One, Two, and Three for that dune restoration project. And then the DA 143, that is, that is ongoing, and, you know, permitting and the design for the permitting is, is ongoing. And then I'll, I'll be up there this Friday with the, the North Topsoil Beach, the finance officer, and, or, you know, and Kim and Alice to work with FEMA on that PTC eight. And then grant coordination and permitting coordination on all projects. And that is my update.
Thank you, Fran. Does anybody have any questions on the board?
No.
Thank you so much, Fran, appreciate your time.
Well, Chris is here.
Thank you.
Well, wait, hold on, Fran.
Fran, you say, update on permitting?
Update on permitting.
Can you get it?
I'm sorry, I should have got it way up there.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, I'll be honest, we've, we've, have not moved forward very much on this right now. I've had my health issues this fall, and it's been, it's just been slow, trying to keep up with everything we have and try to do this.
It's a new year.
It's a new year, so, sorry.
All right, thank you, Chris.
Do y'all need me for anything else?
No. We appreciate you coming, Chris, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Any other beach questions? No? All right, thank you, Fran, I appreciate your time.
Okay.
Thank you, Chris. Okay, we are going to move on to the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Then the next item will be continuing business, and it's the fixed asset disposal. So I will ask our police chief to come up in case anybody has any questions on it, but I am looking for a motion for the sale of weapons outlined in the chief's memo, that the sale made giving first refusal to the town of North Topsoil Beach Police Officers, and then any weapons that remain available after that initial offer would be sold to the highest bidder.
I'll make the motion for approval for the sale of the weapons, and the sale be made given first refusal to the NP, NTPD Police Officers.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
We have a second, and any discussion then? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thanks for getting up, chief. Okay, the next item is the NC DOT letter of an intent to repeal the speed limit, 45 ordinance number 1033725, for the 3.92 mile section of 1568, which is New River Inlet Road, and this is Attorney Payson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The board has probably seen the legal opinion that we drafted. There are a number of options before the board, understanding that the controlling statute is general statute, Section 20-141F. So the board obviously can take no action, but they can also lower the speed limit themselves. However, the statute requires NC DOT concurrence. There was a proposed compromise that was submitted to us, lowering the speed limit to 40 miles an hour. I think that, that meet in the middle of approach may be worth discussing with, with NC DOT, but the statute, as we interpret it, is fairly clear that any action that the board takes would need NC DOT concurrence in order to go into effect. We do not believe, again, from reviewing the statute, that it appears that NC DOT can act, in this case, unilaterally.
Does the, okay, so do we have a motion? And a second for any discussion? No? Okay, so is it the desire of the board to take no action today?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Yep, we have no new business, so we're going to move on to the second open forum. Is anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, Bob Girkens, 142 Ocean View Lane.
Testing, okay. I'm Bob Girkens, I'm president of Ocean Sound Village Association. I've had Alice here for over 20 years, owned property for 30. I've actually been here longer than Deb, which is always interesting. Anyway, there are three things I want to touch upon quickly. One is, I was a little offended that you think those of us who oppose your new provision, it's because we're being selfish. I should point out that Ocean Sound Village has always been more restrictive on where houses are with respect to the setback from the standpoint of what Kama and the town had permitted. We've always been more conservative on the size of the crossovers, which we believe are one of the major problems with the dune damage, and we've required that they be significantly smaller. So we're a bit insulted when you tell us we are only worried about our own community, our own house. That has not been the case. The two transparency things I would like to have a feeling for is, I know that the state, as part of the Hurricane Helena relief bill, put things in there that significantly restrict town's ability to downzone. And I assume your council has been keeping you guys informed of that, and whether or not, for example, this most recent action that the board has taken, whether or not that's clearly permitted or not permitted, whether or not any communications with the Attorney General on how he interprets it. I mean, all those questions, to the extent you guys get information, I think the town would appreciate understanding what kind of legal advice they're getting. The other transparency issue I'd like some information on is the status of Phase Four. This is the third winter we've been told that it would be completed in front of our community. Whether or not it's going to get there or not this winter would be nice to know, because we've been holding off doing some restoring work, both on our dunes and our walkways. And if, in fact, the restoration is not going to take place this winter, we'd like to know it sooner rather than later. That's all I have, thank you for your time.
Sir, there is one clarification I'd like to make, just on Phase Four, that project is a, is a beach project. It is not holding up any, any plantings for your dunes or your crossovers.
Well, as you know, no, I understand that, but the thing is, we do have, you know, a five-foot cliff on our dunes. And we may arrange for a private sand push to deal with that issue if, in fact, we're not going to get sand on the beach. We're going to get sand on the beach, which will have an impact on us putting up fences. For example, we haven't put up any sand fences to help build it up this winter, because we're waiting for a beach nourishment. We've also haven't put in adjustments to our walkways, which are eating into the dune, because we're waiting for the beach nourishment. So if it's going to happen, wonderful. If it's not going to happen, we'd like to know sooner than April. That's all we're asking.
And I think that's something, if you would like to email Ms. Darian, she can definitely follow up with you directly for your community and let you know what thoughts are on how far we're going to get and the impact to you, and then you'll be able to plan what you need to do.
Yep, that would be helpful, thank you.
And Bob, just for clarification, when I talk to you guys, since then, I think Terry might have told you, we've got a different contractor, okay, than we did when I talked, talked to you. So we moved on to a, that's why there was a little bit of delay in starting for, because the whole idea was it was going to be done this year, but when we switched over to a contractor that we thought was better for the town and better for you on the beach, that's, that's what that little bit was, but I think Alice can fill you in on what we're.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the change of the engineer and the change in the contractor very well may have slowed down the process, and we just want to understand how bad it's been slowed down, because we're right at the end of the project.
What she can tell you is, let's just say, your village is this big, I don't know if this piece is going to get got, this, you know, so Alice can fill you in and give you an idea from the beach engineer.
All right, that'd be helpful, thank you.
Thanks.
Rusty Walker, 115 Seagull Lane.
Ma'am, after everybody who's signed up speaks, you'll be able to speak.
Good afternoon, folks. I'm going to change the subject just a little bit, anyway. Same subject, different subject, but dealing with the renourishment and the getting damages repaired, and this, that, and the other. Up here on the north end, my name's Rusty Walker, live at 115 Seagull Lane. At the, at the north end of the island, we are challenged for beach access. Once you hit, I think, where Shipwatch starts, at the Shipwatch area, you've got the county area, the county access number one, and there's a Kama access just south of St. Regis. The next public. The next public access is at, is north of the reef, coastal, I think at coastal. So you've got a long stretch of beach with no public access. You've got the widest part of the island with the densest population, plus all the new building that's going on up there right now. Don't know what the process is, don't know what it'll entail, whether the planning committee needs to get involved in this or just who needs to throw the ball up in the air, but with the repairs that are having to be made now, might be a good time to start looking into some of these things, but from, I'd say from the St. Regis north, you've probably got, there probably needs to be two, if not three additional accesses made, you know, for that area. Now, I know, I'm not talking about parking because that's another whole, another whole story, but you've got a lot of people that are moving in up there that obviously would like and deserve, deserve, you know, a proper walk-on access to the beach. We need some beach to walk onto right now, but we need, we need a way to get there. And with some of the past damages that had been done, I know some of the private places are, that had been allowing the members of the neighborhood to come in because of some other local issues that have happened, they've decided that once they make their repairs, they're, they're gonna kind of take their property back and lock the gate to those of us that have been helping out mowing grass and what have you, so kinda like to have a place to go. And I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that's signed up, Ms. Darian?
No, the only other one on the list was Anthony Riccardi who spoke during the public hearing.
Okay. Yes, yes ma'am, if you could just please give us your name when you come up, that'd be great, your name and your address.
Suzanne Van, 1921, New River Inlet Road. My question is, according to, with the DOT information, I was hoping to hear about finalization of when and if the crossovers was gonna happen sooner than later. I really feel that the crossovers there at Osprey, a crossover there at Villa, and towns' crossovers. The crosswalk with the, with that you mashed the button and the flashing light comes on, that would really, really help with the safety of anyone at any time crossing. I know there, before you get to 1825, 26, that public access there is around a curve and that's my neck of the woods and I have just cringed multiple times. And if we can have those crosswalks at those particular spots that deems a safety issue more so, like it is at the public access, they have that, I do believe that they can mash that button, but there's a crosswalk there, well, they need to. It would be very beneficial, but just, just those few, I think would deter any discussion about changing the speed limit and that kind of thing because it is a safety issue. And I think those crosswalks with the flashing lights would help.
And we, that is a project that we have been working on, so what we potentially could do when Ms. Darian's ready is maybe we just add that to the projects tab or somehow communicate it that way, but we definitely could give an update on where we are at the next meeting, I would say.
That would be wonderful, I thought that's what we were gonna be discussing as well.
Thank you.
And to be honest with you, I'm really sick of apologizing to people at Villa and Splash that that thing hasn't been there when we've already authorized it, paid for it and we're waiting on DOT.
Yeah.
Exactly. Oh, yeah.
So we'll work on that. Thank you, ma'am, though, for bringing that up. Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Yes, sir, come on up, you know, you know the drill.
Jeff Meyer, 2224, New River Inlet Road, Unit 138. Just two questions. I may have misunderstood or fallen asleep. I didn't hear any conversation about, I don't know what we're supposed to be calling it now, I know what we don't call it, the temporary groin, potential groin.
Temporary retention structure.
Okay, whatever he said. I didn't hear anything about that, so if there is any information, I'd like to hear it, I just wanted to know if we heard anything new, Tom, on the Cobra issue. Other than that, that's all I've got, thank you.
Thanks, happy new year.
The hardened structure issue was what was briefed by Fran concerning the EIS, okay? I will cover the Cobra issue during my alderman's report.
But also keep in mind, that's separate from what we're talking about with BISAC and the beach plan, because we're not assuming one's gonna happen.
Nothing to add, Madam Chair, however, I'm sorry, no report, no formal report, but I would mention to the Board that the Board had expressed an interest in having the planning board comment, review and comment on some of the issues that were raised today in the new ordinance that was passed. I might suggest that the Board, by motion, give the planning board some direction and some instruction. I think that might be helpful.
So I'm assuming that we could do that when we come out of closed session?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll make a note of that. From a mayor's report, there's been a lot that has gone into every discussion that we've had today that all of the Board has been very engaged with and I just appreciate everybody's time and effort on all of that. I certainly appreciate everything the staff has been doing as well. I just want to say Happy New Year and then I'm gonna go around for the alderman's report and we're gonna start with Alderman Puddle.
Could you tell I wanted to go first? Okay. I wanted to thank everyone for coming out and those who are watching at home. I want to thank Alice and her staff for all their hard work. And I want to sincerely apologize to the Ocean View residents. I think I can speak to the whole Board when I say that it was not in any way our intention to insult anyone or to imply that anyone was being selfish. Again, I sincerely apologize for that. I also wanted to add to Mr. Leonard's remarks on former Mayor Don Martin's passing. He was a good man, he was a good, good family man, too. I have a quick little story about him. He used to go up to DC quite a bit in, for our town, and at one point he was up there, he had his grandchildren with him, they went to an ice cream store, all of a sudden, Secret Service comes in, clears out the store, or the ice cream shop, lets them stay, and Obama came in with his daughters and they got to have ice cream together, so that was, that was really something. But I hope that everybody has a really wonderful New Year, thank you.
Yeah, I thank everybody for coming out today. And I do have a story about Don Martin as well, because I'm also one of his neighbors and he was really a good neighbor and just a really friendly guy and we miss him sorely.
Mayor Protem.
Want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, thank you for coming out, just to echo the comments about Don, he was a great neighbor and, and one thing about Don Martin was he really loved this town. He went to Washington a lot, he went to Raleigh a lot, he really advocated for the town, I think to the best of his abilities and part of why we are as far along right now as we are has to do with some of what Don Martin put into motion many, many years ago. I got good news and bad news on Cobra. The good news is that the one Cobra bill that took, that was an administrative correction that took Barton Bay out of the Cobra, it was a map correction, was approved by the Congress and the Senate. The bad news is that we're back to square one with our bill because it didn't advance to the House floor prior to the conclusion of the Congress, the last session with all the monkeying around about keeping the government open and, you know, all the stuff that happened, it did not rack and stack high enough to be considered. I kind of expected this towards the end of the year, have been working with Mike McIntyre, Stephanie Misert and our folks up in Washington, Congressman Murphy's office, we're not done, we're gonna, we're gonna take what we had, we're gonna fine tune it a bit in terms of the bill itself, the verbiage in the bill, which we're working on right now, and we're gonna go right back up there. And I think honestly, this year we're, we're in a better spot with the two houses than we would have been last year, even if it had gotten through Congress with the makeup in the Senate, it would have not passed the Senate and we'd have still been back where we are, other than probably in a worse spot because we would have tried and had a bill defeated rather than tried and not had a bill advance far enough to be considered by the full House and then the Senate. So with majorities on both, in both chambers, that we need to get something like this passed, I think we're in a good spot and we're gonna continue to work on it and we are already working on it. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Alderman O'Shea.
Just want to say Happy New Year to everyone and I want to again thank Anzlo County and its employees for coming out and speaking with us today. It's great to have their information. I would like to see us have a couple of links on our website, back to the outs program and a couple of things so that we can help them in their communication efforts with the citizens. And I look forward to seeing a lot of you at all of our meetings and looking forward to citizens volunteering to be on the committees that the town of North Topsail Beach has.
Alderman Grant.
I've taken up enough of people's time, thanks for coming, Happy New Year.
Okay, then I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.[1316.75]
Aye.[117.64]
Okay, I just would like to let everybody know we're back from our closed session. I'd like a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There were no action taken in closed session today, so with that I would like a motion to adjourn.